Good evening. The August 28th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Wynn.
Here.
Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Saffredin.
Here.
Councilmember Ravel.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Herakakis.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly. Mayor Abyss.
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work. The first item on our agenda is my announcements and proclamations, specifically proclamation in support of the Children's Advocacy Center of North and Northwest Cook County, which will be sent to the Advocacy Center. Just to redo the highlight here, therefore, I do hereby proclaim August 2023 as Children's Advocacy Center of North and Northwest Cook County Month in the city of Evanston in celebration of its 34th anniversary, and we extend our heartfelt appreciation to the staff, volunteers, board members, and all that is associated with the CAC for their tireless efforts, compassion, and the positive impact they have made on the lives of children and families throughout the years. This concludes my announcements and proclamations. The next item on the agenda is the City Manager's public announcements.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Clerk Mendoza. I am pleased tonight to introduce Mr. Andy Vick. I'm going to ask him to come up to the podium here. Just briefly, Mr. Vick is raised in Evanston, ETHS grad, most recently spent time in the Colorado Springs area, and has now returned to Evanston to serve as Executive Director of Downtown Evanston. With that, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Thank you, Luke. I appreciate that. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Stowe said, my name is Andy Vick. I am pleased to be the new Executive Director of the Downtown Evanston Special Service Area. I am three weeks into my new role, so lots to learn, lots to do. I am thrilled to be back home. You may know some of my family. My brother Bob is a fourth-grade teacher in the District 65 system at Willard School. My youngest brother Steve is the Executive Director of the Infant Welfare Society of Evanston. My mother was a former kindergarten teacher. So I have lots of people in this community, lots of love for this community, and I am really looking forward to working hard to make our downtown and the entire city a more vibrant and welcoming place. So thank you so much for the opportunity to be before you today. I look forward to meeting you, many of you personally, in the coming days and working with you over the coming months and years. So thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions if you have it. Otherwise...
Welcome home.
Thank you. Thank you very much. See you soon. Thank you.
If I may ask one question?
Councilmember Reed.
How long have you been in the role? I think it's just...
Three weeks.
Three weeks now. What do you see as opportunities for downtown, and what are you excited for us to maybe support you in, if you know yet?
Well, I could make a few things up for you, but I'm still learning a lot. For me, right now, the important thing is to meet the right partners and stakeholders and understand from them what they need and what they want. I think I have a lot of ideas. Over the last 20 years, I've worked in downtowns, smaller and larger, so I have a lot of experience, and I think I can pull bits and nuggets from those experiences and perhaps bring them to bear here. I think there's a lot of opportunity to fill our downtown with more bodies, with more retail, with more restaurants, and really create an even larger critical mass. It's a challenge. I don't have the answers yet, but that's certainly how I'm going to be focusing. More programming. We have a wonderful, as you know, roadmap with Evanston Thrives, and to me, as I read that, there's a lot of great ideas in there that can be executed, and so I think that's a good starting point for me as well. Check back with me in a few months, and I hope I'll have more concrete answer for you.
And one thing, just as I'm sure you, this is on your mind already, but as a part of the stakeholders that you're engaging about downtown, sometimes it's the folks that we're not seeing downtown that I think are a key group that we need to reach out to and figure out how we can get particularly folks from the 8th Ward, 5th Ward, and minority communities to feel downtown as their community.
I am well aware of that. I'm already working in that direction and feel very passionately about that as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vick.
Thank you. I'll just add to the welcome-home comments. As someone who has two children, who were fourth-grade students of Mr. Vick, your household is, your family is one of celebrity and intimidation in my household, so welcome home. The next item on the agenda is communications from the City Clerk.
I also want to take a minute to say welcome home. I know Andy's brother very well and know how great your family has been to this community, and so glad to see you here, and I know you're just as fully invested in the community as they are. I have public comment from Ann Rainey. It begins, "I realize you are not approving a special service district tonight. This ordinance setting the foundation for District 10, Howard Street, is premature and should not be introduced and acted upon tonight. Most property owners are caught by surprise. Not everyone is active in the business district. Please hold or table and get the word out to those not in the know." And then set the stage for this, SSA. This is on Ordinance 78-0-23. That's all the email public comment for tonight.
Thank you very much. That brings us to public comment. This evening, we have comparatively smaller number of public commenters, and therefore everyone will be given three minutes. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person on this sheet to speak, beginning with Eric Passit, who will be followed by Rob Bush, and then Zafiro Papastrotaros.
Hi, my name is Eric Passit, and I'm a resident of the 4th Ward and also the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos. I'm here kind of for two reasons tonight. One is I read and also know that Connections for the Homeless is asking for more money, more funding, saying their funding is basically running out. And the part that I really struggle with about that is when, I know Marguerite didn't, you could say is something separate, but it's all the same organization. They came to us and said, "We don't need money. We just need a place to have, to basically house our homeless." Well, now they're asking, in a very short period of time, for more money, a lot more money. I know one of the aldermen had an issue with that, and you could say it's federal dollars, but where's the federal dollars going for downtown Evanston to improve businesses? I've heard, how much of that $5 million's been spent? Very little of it. And what's going to happen year two? Connections for the Homeless budget's up to $14.9 million. Where's that money going to come from next year? Private funding? I doubt it. Where's year three going to come from? Year four? Year five? We're going to continuously go back to the well. And when we were sold a bill of goods, basically, we were sold that they were well-funded, and that is completely not the truth. So I just would like that noted. And the other reason I'm here is, again, you know, where is, we have committees about just about everything. I just became part of the Just Cause Committee, but I haven't heard a committee asking for business owners to get involved in, "How are we going to improve downtown Evanston?" We have so much vacant space. We have a block that we manage in downtown Womack. We had one space became available. We had like 15 people wanted it. We have several spaces in downtown Evanston. I don't have people knocking on my door for it. You know, when it, I mean, we've had a lot, again, we, how much of that $5 million have been allocated towards that? And the last thing I'll say is, I live literally right next to the Rose Garden, and again, we hired a clean team to clean up downtown. I can't tell you how often our garbage can is full, several times a week. It's not emptied. And it's not what we spend all our tax dollars on. I mean, it's just, this is not what I moved to Evanston. I know some friends who have actually been putting bids on homes in other suburbs wanting to move out, and it's, when they thought it was their forever home, so do I. You know, I don't want to move out of Evanston, not in a million years. I'd like to see it improved. So it's enough said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Rob Bush, who will be followed by Zafiro Papastrotaros, and then Ray Friedman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Rob Bush. I'm the Chair of the Park and Recreation Commission, and I was here to speak on Item A26, which the Park Board spent a great deal of time discussing at its meeting on June 15th. But I understand that this item has not passed out of committee. It was voted down, and therefore will not be on tonight's agenda for any vote. And therefore, I don't need to say what I was going to say. You will see me again. Now, we have a number of things that the Park and Recreation Commission will be requesting in terms of improvement to Evanston's parks. If you've seen the report from the Public Works Superintendent, we have 11 legacy parks, legacy meaning that they have not had any real substantive improvement done to them for over 25 years. And we will be coming to you, I hope, at your next meeting in September with a list of priorities that we think will be important for improving the park system within the city of Evanston. And that is one of the main reasons people move to this town. It's one of the main attractions that we have in this town, and if you have, and each one of you, I believe, probably has a park within your ward that is a legacy park or will soon be a legacy park, meaning that either equipment is going to be removed or some other remedial action will have to be taken in order to maintain the safety of those parks. So I'll see you again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Zafiro Papastrotaros, who will be followed by Ray Friedman.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of the Southeast Evanston Association, and I wanted to speak in support of the tree ordinance. I just wanted to bring a couple of facts to light because I believe that it's a very important ordinance to be passed, and I wanted to share with you that there may be a few things that could improve with it, but as it is, it's important to pass it because it's just been considered for so long that once it becomes enacted, there's still an opportunity to improve it as needed. One of the most important elements of keeping a healthy canopy is the heat. Recently, heat at the valley parking lot was recorded at 118 degrees, and within a mile in the shade, it was 76. That's significant. Mature trees release a lot of water during a hot day, provided that they have been watered. And they do quite a bit, I don't know how all of you feel when you're near a tree, but they do quite a bit to create a much healthier environment, both for the community. It's been recorded. There's been quite a few studies done. Communities that have a mature canopy tend to have a lot less crime. People tend to be a lot more physically active in neighborhoods where they have a lot more trees. It reduces depression. All of these physical characteristics, kids climb them, which means that they're not in front of a screen. It helps mitigate air pollution, carbon monoxide, particulate matter, nitrogen dioxide. So for the quality of the air that we breathe, and after the recent event with the Canadian wildfires, I think that the air quality is something that we're considering more and more. It's very important to have a healthy canopy. It helps people relax. It creates quieter streets, noise, it absorbs quite a bit of noise, the more trees that you have. I had another sheet of paper. And there it is, stormwater. It slows the tree roots, slow stormwater, which is very important, especially with heavy rain events, that sudden flashes of rain, I don't know how many people's basements have gotten flooded or streets. Energy conservation, in the winter, evergreens will block wind. In the summer, deciduous trees will block sun, creating less consumption. They increase home values. There's been one study that said for, I'm done? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Thank you very much. It's been a short summer, it seems like. Haven't seen you for about a month. Hope you all had a good vacation. I wanted to comment a little bit about the trees, but I have a totally different take on it. I agree with saving the trees, saving the environment. My problem is, is that going onto people's private property in order to take care of those trees, I've spoken before about taking care of our public property, taking the snow off of our sidewalks, taking the alley, the snow out of our alleys. We need to take care of our own property before you go onto people's private property and say what they need to do with their property. We need to take care of the city's property. We made a mistake, and James Park spent $8 million on a lawsuit that was totally, all your attorneys suggested against it, but we went ahead and wasted the money anyhow. We have Fountain Square, $7 million, that, with a broken fountain. We spent $50 million on Robert Crown, that the floor is cracked after a couple of years. Who's going to repair that? If you spent $50 million on a new property, would you accept, after a couple of years, your floor to be cracked? I wouldn't. So we need to take care of this stuff. I mean, did we fix the windows here in City Hall? I was told it needed caulking because it's destroying the windows, which cost thousands and thousands of dollars. We had a problem with, I forgot, the community center that it, water backed up and caused us to put in a new floor. Who's watching? Who's watching our money? There's a problem, big problem. We have $200 million in general obligation debt. We're paying 1.2 million a month just for debt service on those bonds, and there's still, on tonight's agenda, more general obligation bonds to be spent. Why? You found $14 million, what, a couple of months ago? And the $14 million turned out to $45 million or $57 million, and we're still borrowing money. And we're not taking care of our own obligations. We need to do that. We need to take care of, I agree with this gentleman who talked about Evanston. People want to stay in Evanston. What's going on downtown Evanston? Losing businesses left and right. We need to take care of business. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. This concludes the people who signed up in person to speak in person, so now I'll move on to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Mark Bishop, followed by Michelle Redfield, and then David DeCarlo.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilpeople. My name is Mark Bishop. I'm a resident of Evanston. I've lived here for eight years. I've currently lived for three years in my house in the 7th Ward, Grant and Wesley. When we moved in three years ago from our window, there used to be, there was this beautiful silver maple that we used to watch kids play in. And I would honestly tell you that my wife and I used to just watch kids play because it was such a miserable time for everyone, and that would bring us so much joy. That area in between where my house is, where the golf course is, there's a little nook of green space that is a little bit nook of life. It's a thoroughfare for people walking by it. Kids play in it. There's a little fort in part of it, and we've recently learned that apparently next week, those trees, many of those trees will be taken down as part of the Canal Shores renovation. I'm a big fan of Canal Shores. I really adore the course. For two years, I volunteered, helping out with that trail, clearing the trail, cutting down invasive species. I believe in community golf course. I love it. I think it's a fabulous resource for the community. I'm really saddened, though, because I feel like these trees are part of that resource from the environment perspective, but also from like a human perspective, and having kids outside playing and being able to walk by them and have the shade from the canopy and the fresh air from the trees. These 100-year-old maple trees, I hope we can do something to pause the taking these down and do something to at least make sure that it's part of a master plan. I do know that they are replacing the trees with saplings, but it's hard to replace 100-year-old trees, and I just hope we can do something to try to preserve these trees. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Michelle Redfield, who will be followed by David DeCarlo.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm here to speak on a similar, on the same topic that Mark spoke about, which is the Canal Shores removal of many, many large trees on the golf course. And it's been going on for years. Just last week, three huge ones near Chandler, Newburger were taken down, and now there are more coming down. And I know there's a public ordinance right now, and we're talking about a private ordinance, and I'm sort of wondering if these are falling through the cracks. Like, I don't know if these are public trees. It's MWRD property, leased to the city, subleased to the golf course, so I'm not sure. I heard that they've had approval. So in addition to kind of Mark's argument, you know, we have, and the city has committed to the Climate Action and Resilience Plan, the CARP Plan, and as part of that, you know, we have a special section all about urban canopy and green space. I don't need to talk about what the benefits are, that's already been done, but what's happening right now on Canal Shores is in direct conflict with our CARP commitments. And so I, like Mark, am asking for this to pause, at least until we understand, are we doing this the right way? Are we doing what we should be doing? Are we meeting our CARP goals while we're also cutting down 100-year-old trees? So again, I'm just asking for a pause so that we can look at this a little more carefully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David DeCarlo.
Good evening. My name is David. I'm a 7th Ward resident and president of the Most Livable City Association, which, as many of you know, is a community nonprofit opposed to the current plans for Ryan Field. Yesterday, we copied you all on our group's open letter in response to the university's latest plan to commercialize its athletic campus. In the letter, we argued that Evanstonians deserve an open and straightforward process, both from the university and from our public officials. I'd like to give just a couple of examples where the process doesn't seem to be meeting the mark. One example is before you tonight. Item ED1 on the agenda requests your approval of funding for Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. Since at least December, however, the Convention and Visitors Bureau and its executive director have been lobbying and campaigning in favor of Northwestern's Ryan Field proposal, which thousands of Evanstonians oppose. But why is an organization funded by our tax dollars allowed to lobby and campaign for something so many people in Evanston don't want? I urge you to vote no on this request for funding, or at least refer it back to the Economic Development Committee and to city staff to determine a way to restrict the group from lobbying on behalf of Northwestern. Another example is on the city of Evanston's calendar later this week. It's the NU City Committee meeting on Thursday. Recently, the city and NU joined together to ask a federal court to restrict residents' ability to voice their objections about Ryan Field and the current proposals during committee meetings. Why did the city do that? What explanation could there be for agreeing with Northwestern to make that kind of legal maneuver? It wasn't a mere request for clarification, by the way, as some have suggested. It was a legal motion filed by the city to modify a nearly 20-year-old federal decree. To begin to restore public trust, I urge a response to these questions tonight and an explanation for why no input was sought from the city's duly-appointed representatives to the committee, from the city council, or from the public. And I want to close with one last example that may come before you in the near future, and that's Northwestern's actual applications for a zoning amendment and plan development of Ryan Field. You may not know that both our organization and many other community groups have submitted hundreds of pages of evidence to the Evanston Land Use Commission, which is set to meet on September 6th. Yet we continue to see in the papers and hear other reports about some members of this body hoping to cut a behind-the-scenes deal with Northwestern without hearing all the evidence. That circumvents the process. If you're willing to hear from our side, which doesn't have the resources of the university or the billionaire backers of this proposal, I believe you will find that the way of the evidence is against the current proposals, and so I ask you to give us a fair hearing before you make up your mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That appears to conclude the portion of public comment of people who requested to speak in person, just because there's a lot of people, a lot of human beings here who did not speak. Am I missing anybody from either of my lists? Okay, so I'm seeing two hands. I gather there are two people who forgot to sign up? Is that...
Everyone, hey, but I don't know if Matt Cotter signed up online.
Oh, sorry, Matt. I didn't even recognize you with your mask on. You are signed up, you signed up to speak at a committee, so that was, that can, anyhow. So given the relatively short public comment tonight, I'll let you both speak, just in the future, if I could ask everyone to make sure they sign up properly, just so we can make, you know, manage the allocation of time in a way that's both consistent with our rules and fair to everybody. But why don't you both come to, you'll both be given three minutes, and we'll still be under the 45 minutes in total. So go ahead.
My name is Matt Cotter. I'm a resident of the 2nd Ward. I am a volunteer with the North Shore Channel Habitat Project. I am an Open Land Certified Treekeeper and the co-chair of the Environment Board, and I'm here to speak in support of PD1, the amendment to the tree protection ordinance, and I will be brief. With upwards of 80% of Evanston's tree canopy on private land, an overwhelming majority of our urban forest has effectively no legal protection at present. We all know the myriad benefits that trees have for biodiversity, for human health, and for the climate, and I think more innately, all of us can feel the deep interconnectedness of the trees and the ecosystem we live in with human society, and we know that those connections extend beyond property lines. I'm filled with hope with the possibility of extending our collective protection to five times as many trees in Evanston, and I urge you to support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Michael Kroll. I'm a resident of the 2nd Ward, and my girlfriend and I recently moved into Evanston in April due to its accessible transit, walkable neighborhoods, and relatively decent bicycle infrastructure. While we still enjoy taking transit around the city and walking around the area, we are no longer able to enjoy biking in the area. This is because in late June, while my girlfriend was biking to the train station as part of her commute to school, she was hit by a car that did not stop at the intersection of Lake Street and Asbury Avenue. While she was lucky to come away with no major injuries other than scrapes and bruises, this has made her feel unsafe riding her bike along any road. This includes unprotected or buffered bike lanes like on Emerson Street or Church Street that a car is still getting too close to the lanes, and even the parking-protected lanes like on Davis Street or Dodge Avenue due to the lack of protection at intersections, leaving cyclists subject to the right hook. The only bicycle routes in the area she will bike on are the Lakeshore Path and the Chicago Avenue protected bike lanes. While living a mile away from them, we have no accessible route for her to get there. We can't blame the density on the area causing more traffic and more risk of being hit. She had left the house that day at 5:30 a.m. to catch a 6 o'clock train, as she had examined and wanted to get on campus early. This meant while there was little to no traffic in the area, and should have been even safer than all of previous rides. The fact she got hit in the preferred conditions for cyclists shows a failure of infrastructure, allowing drivers to be careless on open roads. At minimum, there should be a stop signal or some major traffic calming, but preferably both, added to the intersection of Lake Street and Asbury Avenue. This is known very well as a dangerous intersection, as drivers will use Asbury Avenue to avoid the stop signal at Lake Street and Ridge Avenue, since the intersection at Lake Street and Asbury Avenue only has a four-way stop sign. The city really needs to be acting more on making proper and safe infrastructure for cyclists in the community if it wants to be the 15-minute city prospective students, including, prospective residents, including me saw it as. I know there are many, or a few projects going on this summer, such as the extension I know there are many, or a few projects going on this summer, such as the extension of curbs at the intersections along Ridge Avenue, and addition of a bike path along Oakden Street between Dodge Avenue and the North Shore Channel Trail, but there needs to be more being done to make cyclists feel safe while biking in the area. I and many others have been adding lots of comments and concerns to the Illinois Active Transportation Plan interactive map. And while there's a fair bit of green on the map, there is still a large amount of orange routes and comments throughout the area. I do hope that the city takes these concerns to heart and are able to make it a place that is safer to bike, not just for people like me that'll put up with the poor infrastructure, but for people like my girlfriend that won't ride because they know how unsafe it is.
Thank you very much, and I'm glad that she was not injured more seriously. My goodness. That concludes the in-person portion of a public comment. We now move to the online public commenters, beginning with Michael Vasilko and then Mary Rosinski.
Just quickly, on item A18, spoke about it at length at APW, on February 27, 2023, the city council, city staff, committed to a total project cost for the animal shelter of $8 million. A round number was flashed upon the screen, and yet, the staff confirmed during question and answers with council that all costs, including the low-bid construction cost at the need contingencies, contingencies for escalation and change orders, and soil remediation, all consultant fees, all soft costs, cost for temporary facilities for cats and dogs, off-site traffic signalization, and permit costs of any kind, without exception. No project cost would exceed $8 million. I understand we're waiting for a chart to be prepared that shows us this is all in budget, and I ask this item be held until that information is made available. The real reason I'm speaking tonight, following up on David DeCarlo's excellent comments, while you're all on vacation, an unfortunate and destructive flow of events occurred intentionally to undermine the authority of city council members, specifically, in this case, undermining the authority of the court-decreed NU City Committee meeting. This is not a conspiracy theory. What took place was done, was well documented, and is a conspiracy. The hearings, there were hearings scheduled by Mr. Cummings, now who's no longer with the city, but his office and Northwestern University were scheduled secretly, without the knowledge of any of the council members. How could that be? How could council members not be informed of such court hearings intended to undermine council authority? An independent investigation and a forensic audit are needed and should be funded by the city, but not managed by city officials who cannot be trusted, especially the office of the Corporation Council. So there were two hearings. There's a series of dates with, where other, these memorandums to the court were submitted. That's all been documented very carefully. This has been well-publicized. Cummings' actions were a serious breach of trust in Evanston's appointed government officials. It saddens me that the city manager, Stowe, admitted that he was aware of Cummings' intent to undermine NU, NU Committee meeting. What we don't know is who else was involved. We know the city manager was involved. We know the Corporation Council. We know Northwestern was involved. We don't know if the mayor was involved. We don't know who other council members knew and shouldn't have known. So I'm calling for an investigation. That's what I'm asking for. That should take place. Every member of the council should be, should demand that.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinski.
Hi, thank you so much. I agree with everything David DeCarlo said and also what Mike was just talking about because even though no one knew on council or mayor that Cummings was having this hearing, and he had scheduled it back in May for the first hearing, and then in August, I guess it was, or after the second one, we knew the date before. So he could have been told to withdraw the motion, but he wasn't told to withdraw the motion, and it was public knowledge by then. So that was very disappointing. So I think going back to the idea of process is important because it builds trust in our community. We need to be really hyper alert here in Evanston because we have bypassed a lot of processes. He actually wanted to also speak to three things. One was, we are a tree city, as you well know, and I would hope that we would pass the ordinance. We may not pass it tonight, and I would hope that we don't create some artificially inflated job to do it. They should be able to go through the Forestry Department and the committee that is in charge of the trees. I would like to know, you know, if, how many permits we do need on an annual basis. I think that's hard to say, but in construction, how many times have we had trees taken down? Is, are we, I don't think we're talking thousands. I think you could call Northbrook, they look for it and see how they do it without having to hire one, just like we were talking about having a leaf flow. We don't need a job for a leaf flow. We need employees that can help make our city run better. Second was, I'm a little concerned about the sole source software estimates. There are six of them, I think, in today's budget. Maybe that's the way software works. If that is, then that's legitimate. But if not, we shouldn't be asking how come we're not getting competing bids. You know, in April, we found that that $14 million surplus from 2022 had jumped up to $50 million, and I still haven't seen where we are, where that money has been reallocated to. So I get a little perturbed when we talk about 2023 bonds, and we don't even, we don't have an allocation of these 20, this $50 million surplus from the budget last year because I don't think we need to go into more than the $200, $200 million debt. And so that was actually what I wanted to say. I think, thank you for David DeCarlo for speaking so eloquently, and Mike Vasilko, and everyone who spoke to the Tree City. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders of Business, of which there are only one. Would someone care to make a motion relative to item SP1? And I guess the motion that I would be asking for is a motion to initiate a discussion, not a motion to take a particular action at this time.
So moved? Second.
So Councilmember Kelly moves. We enter into discussion relative to the enforcement of the plastic bag ordinance. Councilmember Harris, seconds. I want to begin by turning it over to the city manager to kind of explain the context for this item.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. We have a business on Noe Street that purchased approximately a year's worth of plastic bags last summer, well before the discussions on the plastic bag ban ordinance. I did feel this is something that I could have dealt with administratively, but I felt it was best to seek guidance from the city council on this issue. I had multiple conversations with multiple council members, and the business in question has several months left of plastic bag supply, and I had a conversation with the owner a few, several days ago. They do believe that they can use up the remaining supply by the end of the year, and so we are here tonight seeking guidance from the city council on whether or not to proceed with enforcement of the ordinance or to extend the grace period to businesses until January 1st, potentially.
Thank you very much. We begin with Councilmember Reed, followed by Kelly.
Thank you, thank you. I think it's important that we pass this law. We passed it in, what was it, May of this year? It's been coming down the pike for quite some time, and it was, again, it was passed in May, I think. Many businesses had a good warning about this coming. I do understand the concerns about leftover product, and I understand that DND is a smaller vendor, and so with that, I'm more open and more amenable to creating an exception there. Although, when you think about what plastic bags are in the first place, they're giving them away in the first place, so I don't know what the harm in, you know, you'd have to buy some new bags, but, you know, chuck them or recycle them effectively and, you know, switch to the new bags. But I'm open to hear what the conversation is, and, you know, if we create a carve-out for our smaller businesses just to the end of the year, I think that's reasonable. But I certainly think we need to make sure, I've heard of a number of businesses, larger businesses, that are continuing to distribute plastic bags and are not charging the tax. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Harris.
Thank you. So I think when I looked back over our January 9th meeting, and when there was a straw, straw vote taken, the majority really wanted to see some measures implemented that would offer some protection for our small businesses. And then what happened, and at that point, the ordinance on January 9th stated that the compliance date would be April 1st of 2024 for all, for all businesses. So we postponed it, we held it to come back with some measures for protection, and then we end up with a two-month compliance date. So I think something got, it went from originally being, back in January, an April 1st, 2024 compliance date, to coming back to council in, at the end of May, almost in June, within August 1st, just two months away. So that didn't go, I think, the direction that we intended, and DND is not the only business. Many businesses, including large ones, who've tried to make some accommodations, everybody, you know, and when I look at all the other, all of the other plastic bag ordinances in all cities, I've yet to find any that comes anywhere near close to a two-month compliance. I think this was just a council oversight, I really do. I don't think we ever would have passed if we had understood, hey, we're cutting it down from a year and a half down to two months. So I think that was just, I think we need to extend it. I think even January 1st is, you know, that's still only six months, but definitely far better and allows everybody to just get in line, and reminders from inspectors are helpful, but I think issuing violations or fines is really unreasonable, and I thank city manager Stowe for taking the initiative to bring this forward, to seek directions. So again, like Boston, it was a year and a half, they passed it in December of 2017, they gave a year for the large places 10,000 feet or greater, they gave a year and a half to small businesses. Again, I found no city that came anywhere near close to just a two-and-a-month turnaround period to ban plastic bags. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, and I am sympathetic to, we changed the date, and I think I mentioned this last Monday, that when we make decisions, we have to think about those decisions in its totality. I had a business in my ward that called me prior to and said, we have thousands and thousands of dollars in bags. And what I did is I worked with our sustainability coordinator, manager, director, boss, whichever title you have, all of them, and we figured it out. And the company donated $24,000 worth of bags. I think if we pass the law, these are the things we have to think of proactively, not after the fact. If we make law, then we have to live by the law that we made. So there would be no way I could get behind this when I made one of my businesses donate $24,000 worth of bags to a soup kitchen. So I do have that name. If DND Dog wants to do something like that, they did get a tax write-off. I couldn't get behind that because I made my businesses that I know about stand behind the law that we created. So that's just where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add a little more? Because I think people had questions and concerns about Valley, that they're a family business, and there's other stores. The reality is, is before I got on council, they changed the bags because we had a thin bag law, I'm not saying it right, and I'm sorry, but they upped their bag game, and they bought 24-cent bags, whereas their brother, sister, cousin entities and stores had the 4-cent bags, and nobody was willing to take that 20-cent hit because, again, Valley changed to what Evanston asked before I got here. So everybody's like, oh, they could send their bags somewhere else. The other stores weren't willing to make that 20-cent hit. This is business. This is business. So again, when we make decisions, we have to think about that, and, sorry.
At this time, no one who's asked to, no one who's not yet spoken is asking to speak, so we'll go back to folks for a second crack, beginning with Councilmember Reed with three minutes and 40 seconds left.
Thank you. Given that I'm not, maybe I'm not reading the room right, or maybe folks just haven't spoken up yet, but it doesn't seem like, I think, it seems as though a number of us, and maybe there's lights that are going to come on now, but are on the side of where Councilmember Harris is, is that we made a law, there were, you know, a few, you know, you could say unintended or intended consequences that happened, and I think we have to live by it. Valley was willing to use the tax write-off system to donate these bags to a good cause, and, you know, I wonder if DND, with just a few months' supply, can do the same. I mean, we, we give these, these were bags that folks were giving away anyhow for free, and we're not charging. And I'll note that there are stores, you know, right across the border in my ward, there's a small independent grocery store, it's named Morelia's, in the 40, in the 50th Ward of Chicago. And they have the 7-cent Chicago bag tax, and they also charge a 10-cent bag tax for their bags, and that's, or not bag tax, but bag fee that is for the store. And so I encourage, you know, while our ordinance, you know, provides 5 cent for the store and 5 cent for the city, every business, I encourage you to charge more. You know, why give these bags away for free? Why not make that a part of the, you know, why not collect some revenue on that? And there are stores that are doing it. This is a small, independent store, minority-owned, and I think they're doing just well, and so I would encourage other folks to adopt that practice as well, and maybe that can help DND cover the cost of the bags that they would donate. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Safford, and followed by Hadda Katis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am certainly sympathetic to the plight of small businesses in Evanston. I talked to a number of small businesses in the Fourth Ward as we were putting together this bag ordinance, and the small businesses I spoke with made it fairly clear that they were absolutely comfortable with banning plastic bags. Were far less comfortable with the bag tax. And so with that feedback in mind, you know, we kind of restructured the original draft and exempted small businesses from the bag tax, but did not lift the burden of the plastic bag ban from those businesses. So I'm not sure if I'm contributing anything to the administrative question at hand, but I am sympathetic to small businesses. And I could understand why a small business would buy a year's worth of plastic bags in advance because they're going to get a better price than a Valley or Trader Joe's or a Dominix, you know, it probably goes through in a week what one of those businesses goes through in, in six months or a year, so. The message to us for next time is, let's make sure we're thinking about every single possibility as we put together policy. Thanks.
Thanks. Just, there's a number of people still online to speak. I just want to say that I think, first of all, I want to express appreciation to the city manager for bringing this to council. As the indicator, this, I think it's very, very clear he didn't have to, given the authority the city manager has to make administrative decisions like this one, but given that he was aware there are people on council with very strong and incompatible feelings, he thought it was just the right thing to do to bring it forward, and I'm really glad of that and appreciative of that kind of spirit of collaboration that we have. In light of that, I do, the one thing I really want to make sure that comes out of this is a clear position from a majority. And so I hope that this discussion will end with a motion made that is clear in terms of the direction that it gives the city manager, and that the motion passes. Obviously, that doesn't need to happen yet. There's a number of people lining up to speak, but I do hope we land on that before moving on from this agenda item. So those who are signed up, there are several signed up to speak who've already spoken, but those who have signed up to speak who have not yet spoken are Councilmembers Safford and followed by Hadda Katis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start, I'd just like to point out the importance of what Councilmember Nusma said, especially as it relates to the tree ordinance. of what Councilmember Nusma said, especially as it relates to the tree ordinance. Um, we have to make sure we think that all the way through before we enact it. So we're not back here having a similar discussion. Um, so Luke, what are the options that you are considering?
So in the memo, I put forward two options. One is basically allowing a grace period for everybody until January first, uh or just continuing with enforcement of the ordinance immediately.
Okay. And I'm going to assume that there is nobody here who represents the business that we're discussing, uh just for the record. Okay. Um, are you confident that this inventory of bags represents the largest inventory? There's whatever we decide, there won't be another business that'll come forward with.
I I have not heard from any other businesses in this particular predicament. Um, he has about twelve to thirteen thousand dollars worth of bags left and thinks that he can expend most of them by the end of the year.
Okay. Um, and one of the things that we hear a lot is that we're not helpful to business. This is an opportunity to be helpful to a business. The bags exist. They're ordered. They're custom printed. If we were to allow a grace period until the end of the year, do you have the sense that this would be the only business not in compliance? Are there, I mean, are there other businesses that are not complying as far as you know?
I don't know if other staff in the room want to weigh in on that. I'm maybe maybe Ike has a thought on that.
Good day, members of City Council. Ike Ogbo, Director, Health and Human Services Department. Um, in regards to facilities that are not in compliance, there are quite a number of them. Uh, I can't provide the exact numbers as to how many facilities have not complied. Uh, what we've done so far is conduct inspections at a number of these facilities to achieve compliance, um working with the store managers and of course enlightening to the features of the ordinance. Um, some of them did state their concerns, but the ones in which we've spoken to have subsequently complied. Um, and as I stated, I can't give you a figure of those who have not complied, uh given the number of facilities that have to comply. But we are continuing to work with facility managers in regards to achieving compliance.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, without anybody from the business being here, I don't know if the donation tax write-off makes sense for them. Um, obviously, they made a business decision under one set of regulations, and we we changed the game on them. Uh, I don't think it's in the city's best interest to do harm to a business like that. And I'd encourage you to consider um allowing them to go through their stock of bags, uh putting a firm date on it that applies to all businesses, giving us time to sharpen our enforcement. And um, but but I I think if the decision is to not be reasonable about this, this is just another example of why we make it so difficult to do business in Evanston. And this is a longstanding business, but you know, businesses that are considering multiple locations, um the possibility of going to another community besides Evanston, this is the type of thing they look at. And they say, this council's not reasonable. The city's not reasonable. They're not going to work with me. Um, I'm going to choose to locate elsewhere and still have access to Evanston consumers. And that's the other problem, is that we have a lot of businesses along the borders of our town because people want access to Evanston consumers, but they don't want to deal with Evanston regulations. So I would encourage you to be reasonable and give them till the end of the year. Uh if that's what they said is what they think it'll take. I mean, you know.
That's my understanding.
Councilmember Hadda Katis.
Uh, City Manager Stowe answered my question that I had. I was just curious about what the dollar amount was for their inventory.
Yeah, it's almost twelve to thirteen thousand dollars worth of bags. And as Councilmember Suffered and pointed out, the bags also have the logo and name of the business stamped on them. So it's difficult for him to resell it.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time. So we'll move on to those uh seeking to speak for a second time. Uh, Councilmember Kelly with two minutes and fifty seconds left.
Um, thank you. So yes, to the point that it is advertising also, and when a small business invests that kind of money for advertising, it means something different to say, just give them away. Um, and um, I just want to say also, there are a lot of other businesses that are out of compliance. I this one, we're we're naming now publicly, but I'm not going to start naming names. I've heard people say, oh, they're still giving out plastic bags. I'm not going to name those businesses, but let's relieve the stress. Two months was a very, very unreasonable turnaround time. And when I went back and even watched the human service, I just didn't see where someone motioned to reduce it from um eighteen months down to two. I mean, there was no like, let's remove it from eighteen to two. I just I I think there was some oversight. I don't think that was what was intended, a two-month turnaround, to make such a drastic um polit- policy change for our businesses. So um, yeah. So I also ask that we all um move to direct staff to extend the compliance period. Thank you.
Sorry, I just want to, did you make a motion there or you're?
Oh, okay. Um, so I'd like to, is there, yes, I'd like to go ahead and move then that we um extend the compliance period to to January first. And also, just that's not that far off also, but it will relieve stress from a lot of our particularly our small businesses. But I also want to add even our larger businesses, even the one um that was mentioned, also support extending the compliance period.
Point of order, uh, Councilmember Kelly, if you're willing to make, was planning on making a a motion, if you're willing to amend that to only include our small businesses under ten thousand square feet. I I I don't think there's a single reason why Ross dressed for less, or Target, or you know, some other larger business could not comply with this ordinance. Um, this is a, you know, a fairly minor inconvenience to them, and they can shift resources around. Um, I'm I'm sympathetic to the small businesses, not to large corporations.
Is there a second to Councilmember Kelly's motion?
I'll second it if you're willing to make a friendly amendment to ten thousand square feet and below.
Um, I haven't done the research to know if there are large businesses that can't shift them.
All right. Is there a second to the? All right. So Councilmember Kelly moves to direct staff to uh offer a grace period um on enforcement of the bag ordinance until the end of the calendar year two thousand twenty-three. Uh, Councilmember Wen seconds the motion because this is a debatable motion. We'll continue uh with those who've signed up to speak, beginning with Councilmember Burns.
Kara, if you wouldn't mind speaking to the two months versus sixteen months as a first question.
I can jump in on.
I would like Kara to respond.
I'm the person who put in the original date, and I can tell you why the date is different. Uh, there, Kara, you can also respond, but the original date was twenty twenty-three. We could begin considering this, and it took quite a while. And then when the um ordinance finally came around, it was after the date of original implementation. And so it was just adjusted to twenty twenty-four, which was, I thought, too far out. And so then we landed on August. Is that is that somewhat of a correct?
So my question is also, what do you feel about, again, two months versus sixteen months, best practice, what other place is doing? How do you personally feel about the time we allow for businesses to implement this, Kara, if you have an opinion on this question?
Good evening, Kara Pratt, Sustainability and Resilience Manager. I, at the time that this was being considered back in May, had expressed that the timeline was a tight timeline. Upon passage of the ordinance, which to my knowledge was unanimous passage of the ordinance, all staff immediately began to implement the recommendations of City Council.
So your your opinion, though, is that this, the two months, I think, is what was share is a was tight. Would you would consider that a tight turnaround for businesses?
Yes.
Okay. That's helpful. Um, and uh, that's the only question I have for you, Kara. Thank you. Um, I I guess my next question is is sort of the director, well, no, it's really the City Manager Stowe. Are we ever going to fine people for violating this? Because I think I saw in the memo that we're not doing that. And so at some point, I'd like to enforce this unless we're not. And then we should just remove the hundred-dollar, you know, penalty. Um, based on what I just heard from Kara, I'm I'm comfortable supporting this, not for twelve to thirteen thousand dollars. I don't think um, I won't even go there. But if if we don't think we gave folks enough time from the beginning, then then um, you know, I'm I'm supportive of allowing the time that we probably should have allowed from the beginning. But where are we with enforcement? Why are we not enforcing it currently? Do we plan on enforcing it January one? If this uh is approved, do we need to make any other amendments?
Sure. And that's 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 part of the reason for the discussion tonight. But I'll let Director Ogbo speak further.
So it is a matter that we've started enforcing, and our enforcement element has been to educate and to issue what we call a notice of violations with a particular time for them to correct the violations. So that's the model that we go by. Issue a notice, enlighten them, provide education, provide resources to them, then give them a time to correct it. And as long as they're making efforts to to correct it, we will continue to work with the that facility. In situations where all the attempts and all the efforts that we have applied in order for them to comply with the ordinance have not been met, then we have the mechanisms in place to ticket the facility.
Yeah, because I'm it it my last, just the last thing I have to say is, you know, the if if we believe truly believe these bags are polluting the environment, if you apply that to something else that's a lot more obvious, like somebody dumping oil in a in a lake, we wouldn't want them to continue to do something that we've already said is polluting our environment. So I just think whenever that point is, we need to, if we really believe in this, we need to get serious, make a deadline. Um, I I don't think the the dollar amount that I heard is 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 what's setting this business back. I think it's more of a a matter of principle for them that um that they shouldn't be wasteful, but we don't want them to waste in this way anymore. Um, but I don't think the dollar amount is setting them back, even if they had to pay the hundred dollars. I think the way you interpreted is the hundred dollars would be um per violation per day. Would it be per day? Or how are you interpreting it again?
Yeah, it'll be per day.
Okay. Um, so that, but that's it. I I just, I want to make sure that um that at some point, we are enforcing this, similar to Councilmember Harris. I people, uh, business owners came up to me about this. Hey, can we go through our bags? And I did not advise them one way or the other. I just encouraged them to 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 try to, you know, replace their bags with um with paper bags as quickly as they can. Um, you know, so I've 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 done what I could to make sure that businesses in the fifth ward are in compliance. But again, Kara, to your point, if you feel like this was a tight turnaround, then I'm happy to support this.
Councilmember Wen.
Yes, I I I support this motion. Uh, what we're really seeking from everyone is compliance. And there are times where, whenever we've changed the law, that we give grace periods. I think we didn't give enough of a grace period on this one. Uh, I don't want to um harm any of our small businesses. They've struggled enough over the last few years. So I think uh accepting January first, twenty twenty-four, as a hard deadline and making sure that it is strictly enforced, uh gives us more opportunity to educate. So we get compliance. That's all.
Again, we go to those uh who are asking to speak for a second time, uh beginning with Councilmember Nusma, who has three minutes and forty seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think I would be reluctantly supportive of extending uh the grace period for small businesses only, which is where Councilmember Reed was going. Um, the the large businesses go through the bags presumably quick enough that they're already where we need them to be. And I don't want to allow them room to backslide. Um, and not to get too uh precious with the uh with the concept, but if we could limit the grace period to allow businesses only to burn off the inventory of bags they already have and, you know, prevent them from purchasing, making new purchases to use later this year, I would be in favor of that. I'm not sure if that's realistically feasible from an enforcement perspective. Um, but it does occur to me, if the Health Department does uh have, it appears to have some enforcement flexibility, and as long as a business is attempting to correct, I think was Mr. Ogbo's language, the uh the problem, then you're willing to work with them and and won't impose a fine. So I wonder if we even need to weigh in, if we just give you the direction to exercise the flexibility that you already have.
I will certainly need direction regarding this matter, how to proceed.
Continuing with people uh on their second uh crack, Councilmember Harris with two minutes forty-five left.
Thank you. Um, so I'm just, again, going to struggle with this. I don't believe it's unreasonable. We set expectations. I understand that it was a tight turnaround. Um, the law that we created is the law that we created. And we do learn, and we've talked about that. And that is a standing point in which I will always stand, is that we have to make a good decisions in the beginning. But we also, I I I'm going to struggle telling a business to not follow what we've told them to do. I'm going to struggle with that. And especially when one of my businesses donated twenty-four thousand dollars worth of product reluctantly. And I get it, we consider them a big business, but they went out of their way. I talked to legal, I talked to our sustainability, and I'm never going to direct somebody to break the law or to go against what we've um said. So I'm going to, well, I'm going to vote no. Um, but I understand, I empathize with our small businesses. I completely do, but I'm voting no.
Continuing on second cracks, Councilmember Suffered in with two minutes and fifteen seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we're going to have a threshold, I've heard a square footage threshold, I've heard, you know, the term small business used. I think we need to have a clear definition. And I I don't know that anybody in this room right now is the person to do that. I mean, we should talk to, I can't I can't go in or care. Are you feel? I mean, I I don't, this is a business regulation thing now. And so maybe we need to have an understanding of which businesses we're affecting. I mean, we can't do a specific legislation for one business. So if we're going to use a definition like small business or uh we have to have it clearly defined, uh because we've already made a mistake, let's not compound it with another. Um, so I I don't know if Paul Zalwazak is here, or if there's somebody or Luke, if you have a sense of what an appropriate definition would be to create a class of businesses that this would apply to.
Point of order or point of information, if I may. I mean, there's no, the motion on the floor is not about small businesses, does not apply as equally to all businesses. I think there's been some loose discussion about uh doing it differently, but there's nothing before us.
Then I guess I should, and Claire, you intend not to amend your motion to include any definition of a type of business, a small business, square footage requirements, anything? This will be just businesses?
So we did have, I mean, regarding the tax, the ten thousand square, ten thousand square feet or less or more, that was sort of the defining line. Um, most cities gave a year for large businesses of ten thousand square feet or more and a year and a half for small. So six months seems, I mean, I I also want to, obviously, I want this to pass. So um I want to get a feel for where everybody stands on this. But you know, I was hoping just if six months still seems like a very short time for even large businesses. So it seemed to me reasonable to extend.
I don't want to muddy the water. So we're we're going with your pretty clearly defined motion of is it direct staff to begin enforcement of the bag ban in January twenty twenty-four? Okay, I support that.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first or second time. So we go. What?
We got one.
Oh.
I just, I just.
Councilmember Ravel.
Right.
My apologies.
That's okay. Um, I I guess I do want to say I would be sympathetic to an amendment to um focus our leniency policy on small businesses defined as ten thousand square feet and smaller.
Okay, at this time, I believe no one is asking to speak for a first or second time. So we go to third cracks. So we go to third cracks, uh beginning with Councilmember Reed with a minute fifty left.
Thank you. I would like to make a substitute motion to uh have the exemption be for or the deprioritization of enforcement be for businesses that are ten thousand square feet or less, as already defined in our ordinance, seconded by.
Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Reed moves to substitute the initial motion with a proposal to delay enforcement until 2024 for businesses with 10,000 or fewer square feet. Councilmember Revel seconds. This motion, as I understand it, is also debatable, is that right?
Yes.
So while the discussion continues, Councilmember Reed, can you put this in writing for the council? I initially relaxed the writing requirement, thinking we would be doing one simple thing, and now we're doing multiple complicated things. So I'm already kicking myself for my leniency, the lesson being never go on vacation. Do you mind putting that in writing while the discussion continues, Councilmember?
Yes, but if I can very quickly say that.
Yeah, continue, please.
Yes. You know, I think this makes sense for small businesses. I do want to make sure that, folks, while we are providing this runway for the bag ban, I think folks still need to enforce the tax and be charged in the tax, especially if they're continuing to give out plastic bags. I think we need to be collecting the revenue to deal with that burden. And so I just want to make sure that that's clear in the enforcement.
Something that you can make clear by putting it in writing. Next, so continuing with third cracks, Councilmember Nusma, who has two minutes and 20 seconds left.
I'm not even sure where we were when I put my light on, but I will support the substitute motion. And if the movers would entertain a friendly request to further limit that laxity to those businesses who are only burning off current inventory, I would support that.
How do you fix that?
I support that. Continuing with third cracks, we go to Councilmember Kelly with a minute 40 left.
I don't think I had anything else to add to this. Again, I think the six months is a short amount of time for anybody. And, you know, I'll accept the amendment to get this passed. I think it's really important. But I certainly like to have, we're not going to be able to smoke out who's still using them and who's not. I've heard from a lot, that a lot of businesses still are. Let's just relieve that stress, especially for our small businesses that are feeling the squeeze more than the large businesses. So rather than, Councilmember Nusma, I would, I don't think that would be a good direction to go, to try to find out who still has inventory.
Continuing with third cracks, Councilmember Harris.
I'm calling for the question.
Councilmember Harris calls the question. We are now like at the really, the epicenter of my procedural incompetence. I believe this is a motion that requires a second and then is not debatable, it requires a vote as well. Is that correct, Ms. Reddick?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Harris moves the question. We will stand it, well, is there a second for that motion? Councilmember Nguyen seconds the motion. Would the clerk please take the role on the motion to call the question? And the question, to be clear, is being called on the substitute motion that was offered by Councilmember Reed, which I will not allow a vote on that until I get it in writing. But we can have a vote on calling the question.
Council. Councilmember Harris? Aye. Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the question has been called. Councilmember Reed, are you close to?
Yes, I'm a few seconds away from sending it to you.
So we're about to receive the motion in writing. What I think it will say is that the enforcement of the tax for businesses with 10,000 or fewer square feet will be delayed until January of 2024. And for me personally, substitute motions are a little confusing, so I'll walk people through how I believe this goes. If you all vote yes, then it's passed and we're done. If you all vote no, the substitution fails and then the vote reverts to Councilmember Kelly's underlying motion.
Point of order.
Yes.
You said the motion you expected would, was related to the enforcement of the tax on small businesses. My understanding.
I said that exactly wrong, thank you.
Is what you're about to say to correct yourself.
No, he's actually, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sending it, I'm sending it again with.
So it's now been, it's now been Nusmafied. Is it going to be Nusmafied momentarily?
No, it's going to be, it's been Nusmafied, but I forgot to include the 10,000 square feet. I included Nusma, but not, but it's here in two seconds.
All right, so this is, so what Councilmember Reed has put in writing, and I'm glad we did this, is both, what we're about to receive, I believe, is both the 10,000 square foot limitation. So if you're over 10,000 square feet, enforcement continues, as well as the Nusma doctrine of the, the grace period only covers existing supplies. For small businesses. Well, it doesn't say that.
It says for businesses under 10,000 square feet.
Let's see it in writing.
So I'm sending the updated version now, which will say updated version on top of it. And I'll just read it out loud for the benefit of auditory learners as well as the public. The Health and Human Services Department may delay enforcement of the ban on plastic bags until January 21st, 2024, or until existing supplies have been exhausted, whichever comes first for businesses under 10,000 square feet. So that is a substitute motion, and that's the question that's been called. And so now I would like the clerk to take the role. Where again, if five or more people vote yes, this is the, this is it, and we're done, and we move on to the consent agenda. If it fails to pass, then we revert to a discussion and potential vote on Councilmember Kelly's previous motion. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Harris? Aye. Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the city manager and Health and Human Services Director have been duly directed. Thank you all for the discussion. This brings us now to the consent agenda. First of all, I've been told that item A26 did not make it out of committee at all, and so will not appear on the consent agenda or be eligible for discussion this evening. Additionally, I've been asked to remove items A22, 24, and 25 for consideration for introduction and action and to occur tonight. Additionally, I want to pass it to Councilmember Sufferton, who sent a few different emails, but they weren't fully compatible. So I know you had a long list you wanted removed. Could you go through the correct list so we don't make any errors?
Sure, I appreciate it. Item A2, item A12, item A18, item A20, PD1, and then ED1 and ED2.
So what we've removed so far is items A2, 12, 18, 20, 22, 24, 25, 26, PD1, and ED1 and 2. I know it's a long agenda, so I'll give folks a moment to.
Could you please remove item A23 as well? That was the second email. Thanks.
Got it, thanks.
Mr. Mayor? I will move the consent agenda.
Hold on, there's still a lot of rifling. Let's give, give people a minute. Mr. Mayor, could we, could you repeat the list of? Yeah, at this time, the following items have been pulled off the consent agenda. A2, 12, 18, 20, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26, PD1, ED1, and ED2. Are we, everybody good? All right, I would now entertain a motion.
I will move the consent agenda minus the litany of items that have been removed.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of the consent agenda with the modest exceptions of, deep breath, A2, A12, A18, A20, A22, A23, A24, A25, A26, PD1, ED1, and ED2. Councilmember Harris, I believe, seconds. Is there any discussion, seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda with the large number of exemptions previously read is passed. This brings us now to item A2.
I will move item A2, approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage, approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Harris seconds, is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
I abstain.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
And just to note for the record, Councilmember Kelly is gone as of 7:53 PM.
Thank you for that. With seven voting in favor, one abstention, and none in opposition, the motion carries and the credit card activity is approved. This brings us to item A12.
I will move item A12, approval of a purchase of one Vermeer SC382 stump grinder with trailer, one Vermeer BC1500 chipper, two 2024 Ford F550 regular cabs, and one 2024 Ford F750 regular cab for the forestry division of the Public Works Agency.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of the purchases previously read. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Sufferton.
Yeah, Sean, I just want to confirm, these are items that the city has decided that they need in the event that we need to do tree removal? I know you're not forestry, but.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Sean Cholik, Division Manager of Facilities and Fleet Management. Yes, these are all vehicles that, for the most part, are existing vehicles that we're just in need of replacement so that we can carry on tree removal, other forestry operations. You know, they utilize them for a number of different.
Okay, so forestry sometimes deems that it's appropriate to remove a tree on city property, and this is the equipment that will enable them to do this?
On city property is my understanding of what they do. I can't really speak for them, but yeah.
Great, I appreciate it, thank you, Sean.
Sure.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the purchases are approved. This brings us, oh, with, Councilmember Reed should be recorded voting yes, with eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. This brings us to item A18. Councilmember Reed is not in the room, would someone else care to make a motion relative to item A18?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of change order number one to the contract with CCC Holdings Incorporated for the animal shelter improvements.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of change order in question, and I think Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Sufferton.
Yeah, I guess, Shane, I don't know if you can, or Laura, do you anticipate further change orders? I know that's kind of how change orders work. But based on what's going on with this project, do you see further difficulties? Do you think this is just a stutter step? Or do you think there'll be more there?
Thank you, Councilmember Sufferton. My name's Laura Biggs, I'm the city engineer. So I do have concerns about delays that are being caused by the lack of availability in electrical equipment. It's actually affecting a number of our projects and was a big part of this challenge. And to date, we're trying to work with ComEd to make sure that they can provide the transformer that's needed on the back end to re-energize the building. But they are also struggling with being able to get electrical equipment. So the single biggest risk right now is electrical.
Okay, do you think that those will be time extension change orders? Those will be dollar change orders?
Those will be time extensions, but they translate to dollar values when the contractor runs against a delay claim that was outside of their control.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the change order is approved. This brings us to item A20.
I will move Resolution 47-R-23 approving extended hours of liquor service on September 23rd, 2023, September 30th, 2023, October 28th, 2023, and November 18th, 2023, for Levy Premium Food Services one-day Class Z2 liquor licenses.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of Resolution 47-R-23. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Councilmember Sufferton.
Yeah, so my understanding, and Luke, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the value to the city of the licenses is $2,600 total? Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Do you have a sense of what the liquor tax revenue that's generated for the city from these events is? Is there anybody here who can answer that?
I'm not sure if we have staff that can answer that question.
Okay, is that an answerable question, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I just want everyone to bear that in mind, that we charge Northwestern a total of $2,600 for this privilege and an unknown amount of liquor tax collection.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
I abstain.
With five voting in favor, none voting against, and, sorry, I apologize. Five voting in favor, one voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries and Resolution 47-R-23 is passed. This brings us to item, items.
A22.
22A, 22.
Yep, I move ordinance 65023 authorizing the city manager to negotiate.
That was removed from the consent agenda for consideration of the suspension of the rules to allow for direction and action to occur. So if you want that to occur, or anyone who wants that to occur, should first move suspension of the rules.
I will move, or Councilmember, I will move suspension of the rules for introduction and action.
If we could also apply that to A24 and A25.
I will move that for A24 and A25 as well.
Second.
As well as a.
That's it.
Yep, okay.
Councilmember Reed moves.
I'm sorry, please, 20, 23.
And A23.
Okay. Councilmember Reed moves suspension of the rules so that items A22, A23, A24, and A25 may all be passed tonight. In other words, that we can, in a single vote, effectuate both introduction and action this evening on those four items, I believe. Councilmember Harris seconded, is that right? Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the rules are suspended. are suspended. Now, if, you know, would like, you could move all four items in one motion as well.
I, I'm happy to do that if folks are...
It will pull a dog.
There's some unhappy noises on the right side of the aisle.
So, I will move item A22, ordinance 65023, authorizing the city manager to negotiate the sale of city-owned property at 1808 Hovland Court to community partners for affordable housing.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves final passage in one evening of ordinance 65-O-23. Councilmember Burns, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 65-O-23 is passed, and now ordinance, now item A23.
I will move ordinance A23, ordinance 72O-23, selling a vacated portion of public land east of 2137 Crawford Avenue to an abutting owner at 3320 Hayes Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves final passage of ordinance 72-O-23. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. I just want to clarify, this is allowable and proper, but I do want to name that there is, in contravention of our custom, the agenda does not indicate the introduction and action here. So, just in case you're following along, this one looks different from 22, 24, and 25, but will be handled in the same manner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 72-O-23 is passed. Now, A24.
I move ordinance, A24, ordinance 76O-23, amending the City Code, Section 10, 115D, four-way stops, four-way, I guess adding a four-way stop at McDaniel Avenue and Harrison Street.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves final passage of ordinance 76-O-23. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 76-O-23 is passed, and this brings us to item A25.
I move item A25, ordinance 78O-23, proposing the establishment of a special service area, number 10, in the city of Evanston, Illinois, and providing for a public hearing and other related procedures.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves final passage of ordinance 78-O-23. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 78-O-23 is passed. Again, we skip A26 altogether because it failed to make it out of ANPW, and this brings us now to item PD1.
Mr. Mayor, I will move item PD1, ordinance 15O-23, amending Title VII, Chapter VIII, concerning the protection of trees on private property.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage of ordinance 15-O-23. Councilmember Revell, seconds. Councilmember Revell, followed by Sufferden, and then Harris.
Well, I do support this ordinance, but I did have one very minor amendment to propose. I mentioned it briefly at Planning and Development, and I did send a version to the mayor, if I can find it. Dear help, I've lost it.
Yes, I'll forage the entire council.
Okay. It addresses the section about pruning, and, because right now, the way it was drafted, it requires any pruning to be completed by industry-recognized, a certified and qualified professional, and I felt that was pretty stringent, and, you know, there might be a homeowner who himself, herself, is able to do some serious pruning. So, anyway, so the amendment would allow, say basically that the pruning had to be done in compliance with industry-recognized pruning standards, or if compiled by a certified and qualified professional. So, it gives a little bit more flexibility to the homeowner. So, I so-move.
I will, second for discussion.
Councilmember Revell moves to amend the tree preservation ordinance to slightly modify the pruning requirements as previously mentioned. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there any discussion on the amendment? I have people in line to speak, but I'm guessing they probably weren't lining up to speak to the amendment. Does anyone want to speak to the amendment? Councilmember Reed.
Yes. Emily, thank you. I am not a tree expert, but as a council member, I found myself thick in bees and trees and all kinds of stuff that, and so, I'm curious. I think I have learned that if, you know, I, as a homeowner who had a tree in my backyard, certain kinds of trees were to prune it incorrectly, that that could potentially kill the tree. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Emily Okalow, Public Services Coordinator, and for the purposes of tonight, I am a certified arborist. Thank you, Councilmember Reed. It is correct that if you prune a tree incorrectly and sufficiently impact that tree, you could damage it to an extent that that tree, that could lead to the complete decline of that tree. It might take a while, it might take a number of years, but that could contribute to the complete decline of that tree.
And while I appreciate Councilmember Revell's amendment here, I mean, I do think we want to, you know, again, I don't know what kind of pruning a homeowner might do, maybe if it's a very small tree, or if it's one of those, you know, I think they're Kentucky something trees that are not very beautiful trees, by some people's standards.
I'll leave that comment.
Yes, I've heard that, and I don't think it's my truth necessarily, but, so I could get maybe pruning something like that, but I guess this would only apply to the trees that are above the, that are captured by the ordinance. Is that correct, above the six?
Yeah, that's correct. So, that's correct. Only trees that are protected. So, six-inch trees for the majority of trees, 10-inch trees for other trees.
And, and so, I mean, I'd imagine that's a pretty, that's a big tree, right?
Those are, those are big trees. I mean, most property owners are not going to be able to sufficiently prune their trees or, you know, remove branches from their trees and do so safely, you know, without some type of professional equipment. I mean, you would really have to remove very large branches and a number of very large branches to permanently, you know, cause the decline of the tree. I will also add that the amendment includes that pruning must be done according to industry standards, and so, according to industry standards, a property owner even, the property owner would be violating that portion of the ordinance, if that makes sense. So, I mean, there is protection that it has to be done according to industry standards.
So, in your opinion, the amendment, does it, is the, does the amendment provide more or less clarity, in your opinion?
The amendment provides opportunity for a property owner to prune their own trees. It seems quite unlikely that a property owner would physically be able to sufficiently damage a tree during the pruning process. These branches are very big, they're very heavy. It would be extremely unsafe for a property owner to remove a sufficiently large branch in order to cause the decline of the tree. So, the property owner would have to remove really, really big branches, and they would be really, really heavy, and it would be a really unsafe thing to do. They're also very tall, they're very high up in the tree, these branches, and so, most property owners would not have equipment that's tall enough. Like, they would not be able to stand on a ladder that most property owners would own to be able to do this, and then even, like, the activity of sawing through the branch, most property owners would not have sufficiently powerful saws to be able to do that, and to be able to do it safely. I believe most property owners would most likely abandon that process at some point during, you know, that activity, and would feel that it's unsafe as it were happening.
I appreciate that. Do you think the, this provides more or less clarity, the amendment? I fear that, you know, I get the purpose of it, but then, you know, hearing what you're saying, I guess I wouldn't necessarily want to encourage through the writing of the ordinance a homeowner to even think that they should get up there and do it themselves.
I don't believe that it changes from the status quo. So, currently, property owners have the opportunity, you know, to do this. Currently, they, you know, they're able to prune their trees if they would want to. Hopefully, most property owners recognize that these are unsafe activities and would ask a professional to do so.
And this, I guess my time is drawing to an end, so I'll close here. While I, I support the, the intention of the amendment, I do think, given the size of the trees that we're talking about, that it should just be clear in the ordinance that we only want professionals dealing with this, both for the safety of the homeowner and for the safety of potential neighbors and other property that could be around, and obviously, the whole ordinance is about trees, so for the safety of the tree, to make sure that it's done, I think certain trees can only be cut during certain seasons, or you're potentially causing harm to it. And so, I think the language as it is provides that clarity sufficiently. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
I'm going to support the amendment, based on my understanding of the term pruning, and certainly, point well taken. If there's a big old limb, 40 feet in the air, I'm not going up on the ladder to do that.
Thank you.
But I believe the term, and I'm not a tree guy, you're a certified arborist, but I believe the term is sucker? For a little growth that kind of comes out of a big tree?
The tiny little ones?
Right? I'm perfectly capable of trimming that myself.
Sure.
That's pruning.
Yes. There are ways to do it that are more friendly to the tree and less harmful than others, but, but you could physically do that without exposing yourself.
Endangering myself.
Yes, or the tree.
Yeah.
Mostly, yes.
So, it's for that kind of level of pruning that I would like to allow homeowners the ability to do that kind of work themselves.
That's a fair point.
Will the clerk please take the roll on the amendment relative to pruning, and then after that, vote, then we'll go on to the discussion.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 15-O-23 is adopted, continuant is amended. Geez, thank you. Really sorry about that, guys, that was the opposite of the correct word. Ordinance 15-O-23 is amended, and now, continuing with the discussion, Councilmember Sufferden, followed by Harris.
Okay, sure. I have a couple different questions, and I have concerns that aren't going to be allayed because they relate to the encroachment on private property rights, but can staff, Emily, is it possible to reach out to, like, the major tree removal companies and just see how many trees we're talking about, or how many times this has happened in Evanston? I'm trying to understand the scope of the purported problem that we're trying to solve.
So, staff has not reached out to tree care companies. There are a number of tree care companies. It would be, at this point, you know, and we believe it would be impossible to be able to identify all the tree care companies that are removing...
And just call Sunrise and Nels Johnson. I mean, I would imagine there's, like, four big ones, and just get a sense. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that this is a problem. I understand it's likely to pass, but is this a demonstrated problem, or is this like...
Staff has no data on the number of trees that are being removed throughout time.
Okay. And then, I have a question about how this relates to permitting process, which is probably not you, but maybe Liz, but is this going to increase the cost and slow down permit No, that's not you, Emily.
Yeah, so, the, the tree preservation review process will have a cost of $75, and so, projects that are, projects that do have trees that will need to proceed with tree preservation review, there will be an increased cost of $75. And then, as far as time, there is a potential that, you know, that it could increase the time, but if the tree preservation review happens at the same time as other types of building permit review processes, Liz, I apologize if I butchered the language, it may not increase, that, these, these reviews might happen at the same time. So, if there is a zoning analysis, then the tree preservation review might happen at the same time as that zoning analysis, and so, it's not a given that it will increase the time. I believe that the language, the way the language is written, it may increase it by a factor of a couple days. I believe the tree preservation ordinance calls for 14 days, and building permit review occurs in 10 business days, so those two things are almost identical, and they would most often occur concurrently. There may be additional delays if there is, if tree preservation review brings up some sort of change that needs to happen, and then these permits would have to go through the entire process again, then that would, you know, if there are changes, then it would increase that time again.
Okay. And then, taking the lessons from the bag ban, is there anything in here that would allow for people who have projects already planned that may violate a new ordinance to go forward with their projects? Liz, are you aware of any permit applications that might run afoul of the new ordinance that are fine right now?
So, as proposed, we are looking at a delayed effective date of this ordinance to be able to integrate all of the changes that Emily mentioned into the permitting software. So, right now, there isn't, like, a grace period. Once that effective date goes into effect, we're looking at June 1st for the effective date, and our plan would be to do outreach and education, updating all of our brochures online ahead of that effective date, to be able to let folks know in advance that this is something that is newly required for their projects.
Okay. Do you think it's possible, based on your knowledge and experience, that there are people who have projects that are being planned right now that won't start until June, that could get into trouble?
There is the potential. So, if that is something that you would like to recommend an amendment on, staff could definitely look into, you know, looking at a timeframe by which existing applications in the queue would be exempted. Typically, when new regulations are put into effect, as long as there's an application filed with the department, we typically don't retroactively apply new regulations that have been passed in the timeframe as they're being reviewed. So, that would be my expectation of how this would be administered, but if you'd like to bolster that with an amendment in the actual ordinance, that's something...
Yeah, if you can help me figure out what the appropriate way to do that is, because that, I would hate for a homeowner, because that's a lot more than a $13,000 bag-supply issue, and I... issue, and I...
Yeah. As Emily pointed out, that would be something that would require revisions to plans that could increase the cost to a property owner.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Harris.
I'm just worried about us as councilmembers suffered and said, encroaching on private property. We, we hear all the time, we're too involved, and now we're encroaching on private property. So that is a concern. I've been emailed, called, and I worry about, is that really our right? And I understand tree canopy, the heat, I respect and understand that, being in the Second Ward, the Fifth Ward, the Eighth Ward, we need that tree canopy, but I don't have random people coming behind, in my backyard to get under my tree. So I'm very concerned about that.
Can I just, Ms. Rugge, want to just solicit your input on this? Just because councilmember Harris used very specific terminology. Putting aside the question of whether this is a good idea, whether it's a government overreach, from the point of view of whether it's our right to impose regulation like this, is that, is that in question? Can you weigh in on that?
Thank you, Mayor Bis, members of City Council, Alex Rugge, interim Corporation Council. Mayor Bis, the city can make regulations that impact private property, as we've done many times, but we have to have a reason behind it. So there has to be a legitimate reason why the restrictions are being proposed. I think the ordinance spells out those reasons in the city as well, within its governmental right to pass this ordinance.
Thank you. At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we'll go to second cracks, beginning with councilmember Newsma with four minutes and 15 seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to address councilmember Sufferden's concern about the permit costs. $75 is fairly low, especially compared with the cost of removing a tree of this size. I want to make it clear to everybody that the ordinance applies only to trees with a trunk diameter larger than six inches. So that's, this mouse pad is, I think, about a seven inch diameter. So it's that size of a tree we're talking about. It's not something that if you're going to remove as a homeowner, you're probably going to do yourself. You're going to hire somebody to do it. It's going to cost hundreds of dollars, if not into the four digits, and $75 permit fee is, it can easily be absorbed there, I do think. So I just wanted to make that, that point. Also, the ordinance is very closely drafted on the WOEMET ordinance, so we do have ample precedent that this kind of ordinance works in our region, in our neighborhood. So looking forward to passing this. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, continuing on second cracks, councilmember Reed with two minutes and 20 seconds left.
Yes. Well, I'm comfortable voting to move this forward now. I do, too, have some concerns about, and not major concerns, I think they can be answered. I'm curious whether this is intermediate scrutiny because it's, we're dealing with private property, or, you know, a step lower, and, you know, what implications are there, and just understanding what our legitimate reason is, which I, which I think there is one. And, you know, with that in mind, I suppose there is going, you know, that the ordinance contains that information, but I will just echo, some other colleagues have the same concern, that we, in many circumstances, regulate private property in a manner, particularly when the affairs of the private property interact with the community at large, and certainly our tree network play, it certainly falls into that realm. So I think this is an appropriate step. I want to double check that and have conversations with legal to feel more comfortable around that, but I support this and appreciate what I understand to be the logic behind it.
Seeing no for the discussion, would the clerk please take the roll? And remember, this is on ordinance 15-0-23 as amended relative to the pruning issue. And this is for introduction, so should this pass, it'll be back on the agenda for action in two weeks.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries...
True.
Get yourself a mayor who can read his own handwriting. With seven voting in favor and one voting against, ordinance 15-0-23 as amended passes for introduction, and will be back on our agenda in two weeks for action. This brings us now to item ED1. Would someone care to make a motion relative to item ED1?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move item ED1, approval of funding for Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau for the fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves approval of funding for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Sufferden followed by Reed.
Yes, I have the same concern that David DiCarlo brought up. I, and actually, Paul, if you could come up here, and then we could talk a little bit. This came up in 2019 as well. I am baffled why we spent public money for somebody who comes and lobbies us on behalf of Northwestern. With that said, Paul, you believe this is a wise investment. If you could explain your rationale for believing that this is a wise investment.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Clerk Mendoza, members of the City Council, Paul Zalmasak, Economic Development Manager. So the, kind of the short version of the story is the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Chicago North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau, is the organization that is recognized by the state of Illinois to kind of, and I'm going to butcher the, the exact language that goes behind kind of the empowering of Convention and Visitors Bureau, but they're responsible for representing the community and the hospitality industry in the community by promoting events, seeking out events and other, seeking out groups that would attend events in Evanston, or groups that are seeking locations to do events. They'll go and pitch our town to them, and that brings the larger groups to Evanston to stay at hotels, to shop and eat, et cetera. So...
Can you, can you point to specific events that have come to Evanston that but for the North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau would not have?
Fair question. I'm not prepared to answer that tonight, but that, Gina might be able to tell Ms. Speckman. I could probably have prepared a report on that.
I mean, you think the answer is yes, there are some?
Right. So, I mean, the question was, what value do I think they bring? I think they bring that, right? They, they publish in publications, they, they do the latest social media. Now, do I have data to share with you tonight? This is something that we talked about in committee. Are there better ways that we can gather data, gather clicks to really understand what impact that their advertising has? But my task on it is, when I ask the hotels, is it a valuable service for the, for the community and for them? The answer is yes. I'm going to anticipate a response that you might say, which is, well, then the hotels could pay for it, right? And I think there is, there is kind of a role for the hotels.
Is that possible, Gina? Is that how, does the North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau contract exclusively with municipalities, or do you contract with private entities, or like, could a consortium of hotel owners?
Make...
Make, subscribe to the same service?
Hi, Mayor. Hi, councilmembers. How it works, we have 11 member communities, and in order for any business to be a member of the Bureau, and they pay their own dues. So hotels also pay us dues. Municipality has to be a member of the Bureau in order for any business in a municipality to be part of the Bureau. So we do get private funding from the businesses also.
Okay. And can you explain your preferred partnership with Northwestern University?
Well, they're now just a member. There's not a preferred partnership anymore. That was inherited when the Bureau started in 1997 as the Evanston Convention and Visitors Bureau. They called Northwestern a preferred partner, and they worked with them, and we kind of inherited that when we became the North Shore CVB. But we just have basically members, so they're just a member of ours.
Okay. So is it the city of Evanston's membership that enables them to be members?
Yes. But some attractions can be members if they bring a certain amount of people to an area. For example, we work with Ravinia, even though it's in Highland Park. So if it's a destination driver, we do have, they are allowed to be members.
Okay. And do you work...
There's just a handful of them.
Do you work with museums? Do you have any relationship with like the Time and Glass Museum or the Mitchell Indian Museum?
All of them.
Okay.
All of them. We had an event a couple months ago at the Mitchell Museum.
Okay. Well, I mean, I've expressed this, I expressed it in 2019, and I understand that part of your job is filling hotels and events at Northwestern, in your opinion, will help fill hotels, but I think it is entirely inappropriate for you to lobby us on behalf of Northwestern when we're paying you. And I know it's hotel tax money, but it's money that we could use for other purposes if, if we wanted to. So I want to say that publicly right now. I think it is entirely inappropriate for the North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau to be advocating for Northwestern, to Mr. DiCarlo's point, and I think he's gone, against the interests of many residents, Alderman Revel's constituents. I think that it would be a wise idea for you to choose not to participate in that discussion, in your capacity as the...
I understand. We are a trade association, and our members do want some, us to advocate on some of these issues. I've been at meetings that Alderman...
I'm sorry, your members, Northwestern?
No, our, our hotels and restaurants.
Okay. But the city is the one paying it. I mean, when you say your members...
No, they, they pay us, too. They are paying us. We're a trade, we're a 501(c)(6) trade association.
Okay. So who are your Evanston members in addition to what you're asking us to pay you tonight?
Hotels, restaurants, attractions, retailers.
I mean, can you name names, or is that like a confidential thing?
Oh, my God, you can go on our website. We have hundreds.
Okay.
And some of them have been a member over 20 years.
Okay. So do you, when you market Evanston, you give preference to your members, or do you do things like, come to Evanston overall and eat wherever, or do you say eat at this restaurant, which is a member?
Both, because we work really closely with all the merchant districts, whether they're SSAs or not. And so we represent members, but we also promote the merchant districts on, as a whole.
Okay. And you are not a resident of Evanston?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anything else?
Councilmember Reed, followed by Newsma, followed by Burns.
Thank you. I appreciate councilmember Sufferden's line of questioning, not, not just because of the Northwestern angle, but this is something I, too, have also had concerns about our spending here. I, I think you made your money's worth with the WOEMET comments last time, but I will say that I do think that the lack of data collection here is concerning, and it's something I've been asking for since I've been on council. You know, I think in Economic Development Committee, we shared that, you know, the leads that you all generate are passed on to the hotels, and then it's kind of in a black box then. You don't know if your lead actually generated something or not, because it's turned, and if I'm incorrect on that, please correct me, but it's turned over to the hotels, and then their sales team follows up on it. And then there isn't really feedback to you all as to whether a sale was... If you want to come up and respond to that, please feel free to.
We, so we, the whole purpose of a Bureau is to work in addition to the work that a sales staff in a hotel does. So we go out to trade shows, we go to about 40 trade shows throughout the country to bring leads to Evanston that wouldn't have considered it for their meeting or event. So it's incremental business for the hotels. The hotels know that there's 36 convention bureaus in the state of Illinois, and pretty much every hotel has Bureau representation. So they really count on it and expect it, you know? When we send leads out, we send them to the hotels, and we are not allowed, it's antitrust laws, we're not allowed to negotiate rates or availability because we're not allowed to do that. So if the hotel is happy if we send them a lead, if that lead is at a time when they already have a piece of business, they decline it, but they want it. And so we're sending out leads every week to the properties. So again, they expect and want that effort. I mean, it also, half of our budget comes from the state of Illinois. The state collects a 6% hotel tax. They wouldn't want to be the only hotels not being afforded that kind of Bureau sales effort.
Thank you. And, you know, I still think there is data that would be useful for me. I'm going to support this, this time, while I can't quite clearly see the value. I, a lot of my colleagues here do, and, you know, I don't have proof that there isn't value, but I think it's because there's just a woeful lack of data collected by the team, particularly Evanston-specific data. So I, I know that we've had conversations in the past, and I've shared my concerns with you and with Paul at Economic Development Committee and other places, and so next year, I'm hoping we implement a better data model. And then I'll note that, you know, who, who are we really subsidizing here? It is pretty much large hotels that have marketing budgets that they can use to generate leads on their own. And unless there is something, you know, from what I'm hearing is, really, the main product is leads for hotels. And yes, there's...
No. I mean, that is, that is what the hotels get, but they do not have large marketing budgets. Right now, hotels count on their brands to sell them, and they don't do any marketing on a local level.
Right, which I think is their model, and, you know, the folks that own these, I mean, I think our billionaire governor comes from a family who did quite well in the hotel business, and they're...
Right, but like Governor Pritzker does not own the Hyatt House. You know that, right?
My, my point being is that they're, the people who own these hotels are doing just fine. The people up at the top are making quite a bit of money, and they're doing just fine. And I don't think they necessarily need the city of Evanston and our taxpayers to subsidize this. Again, I said I'm, I'm going to support it this year, but in the future, I'd really love to see more data and how this impacts our smaller and local businesses. And as councilmember Sufferden rightly said, this is potentially funding that we could be putting to better work. And so for next year's approval, and I forget if this is a multi-year contract or not.
No.
Yeah. So for next year, I'm certainly going to be interested in seeing better data of how this impacts the city of Evanston. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma followed by Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm fully supportive of this. I think this is money well spent. We're talking about less than $70,000 out of a budget, which was $82,000. That was our budget. Ms. Speckman, your organization's annual budget is...
This year's $3.2 million.
Three million dollars. So what we're getting is really leveraging a little bit of money from, you know, from Evanston taxpayers, getting much more value out of this relationship than we're paying in. I was making breakfast for my kids before school this morning and listening to the radio and heard an ad for Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. It's this kind of thing that helps put Evanston on the map. We need more of this. If we are going to emerge into a post-COVID economy that works for our downtown, we need more people in town, and we need to pull out all the stops on getting people into town, and investing in the Visitors Bureau helps bring people to town. And I think we should all be very excited to support this. More data would be great. I think it would help you, you know, make this more of a slam dunk, but I'm very willing to approve this. Thanks.
Councilmember Burns followed by Revel.
I have no idea what we're talking about in terms of the lobbying, so I guess I missed an article or a Facebook post or something.
It's just that my organization is a proponent of the renovation of Northwestern Stadium.
Okay. All right. Come on, I missed that. Thank you. Support this. I think the work is being done. I brought this up during the Economic Development Committee meeting. I do think there is a way to track data more. Just because you can't negotiate directly doesn't mean you, you can't know when, when your lead closes. You know, that's just basic sales stuff. I'm a sales guy. This is where I started, and you could, you definitely can do it. And I understand we all get into habits, and once you do things a certain way for so long, it's easier to just continue doing it that way. But trust me, there's a way you can track every single thing that you do as a Bureau, and I think you should. I think it'll help when you come back next year for funding. So please, work with Paul and whoever else you can to figure out how you can track that. But I think, I see the value. I just, I want to make sure we have the data to support it next time, and we'll continue to have those discussions on the Economic Development Committee. But thank you.
Councilmember Revel.
Well, Gina, normally, I am a strong supporter of your, your budget. I do think the Visitors Bureau provides a really important service to the community and brings, brings business to our hotels, our restaurants, et cetera. But I have to say, I was very disappointed in reading the, I think it was an Evanston Now article, about your statement at the meeting that Northwestern convened for the, for the chamber back in December. And it wasn't only that you were speaking out in support of the stadium, but your, your comments really were disparaging to my residents. So I'm going to have to vote no.
No one else is requesting to speak for the first time, so we'll move on for second cracks. Councilmember Sufferden with two minutes and 20 seconds left.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I would request that you play the videos that I had sent to you and to Luke and to Anderson.
So there was a bunch of different videos? Is there a particular one?
There are two videos of Gina Speckman speaking in support of Northwestern's project. They should be under two minutes total.
All right. Well, that'll be the end of your time. Can we play those? No. I think these were sent to council. Am I right about that?
Not by me, but they may have been. I just, Bobby mentioned that he had, was unaware of what we were talking about, and I think it'd be instructive for us all to see it.
All right. We'll stay at ease for a minute while our IT staff figure out how to play these.
There's concerns about traffic, but I...
There's concerns about traffic, but I also know that concerts and the demographics of concerts bring people... I know that there's concerns about traffic, but I also know that concerts and the demographics of concerts bring people that take public transportation. And I can't think of any other football stadium, the ones I work with are the ones in the Big Ten, that have a city and suburban train line coming on each side of the stadium. There's lots of opportunities for public transportation, and I think that people will utilize that because they want to get in and out. I see it with Ravinia. Lots of people take Metro to Ravinia shows, and I think they would do the same for concerts at Northwestern Ryan Field. Northwestern University makes Evanston a college town, and college towns are all special and unique. Lots of businesses, the hotels, a lot of restaurants and stores, wouldn't be here if Northwestern wasn't here. There are a lot of benefits that Evanston has by having five hotels in the city. Not only are those hotels in the top 10 of taxpayers of property tax, but the hotel tax generates millions of dollars from people from out of town, and that is money that any city wants. It's money paid for by out-of-towners. You don't have to pick up their garbage, you don't have to educate their children. They come here, spend their money, and they leave. And that is great money that any municipality wants. I'm Gina Speckman. I'm excited about the new Ryan Field project because I think it'll be a game changer for Evanston to have a state-of-the-art facility right here.
So when you said "right here," was that filmed at your house, not in Evanston, or were you in Evanston when you filmed that?
What?
When you said "right here," were you in Evanston when you filmed that, or is that in, at your house?
I was in Evanston.
You were in Evanston filming that?
With other people from the business community that were filming.
Again, I think you've crossed the line, and to Alderman Revel's point, and it's not in those videos, but you have made disparaging comments about residents who have expressed valid concerns. And I have, you're welcome to disagree.
I do. I mean, I think that whenever a big project happens in a city or area, the residents really aren't for it, and I think that they have their say, and I think the business community shouldn't be intimidated in having their say.
Okay, and I think you said something along the lines, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we can't let a small group of people control the conversation.
I don't remember everything I've said on the issue. I really don't even watch this video because I hate watching myself on anything.
I understand, I agree. I mean, not about you, about all of us.
No, I mainly just don't like seeing stuff.
But I, you know, I don't want to misquote you, but it was a statement disparaging of residents who are expressing... Go ahead.
I don't see it, I don't know from it, I'm not denying it, just, you know, I mean, I think what I said in that video is pretty much representing my organization's and board's stance on this. Again, we're, we're stating our stance from the business side of it, from the hospitality business side, and there's going to be a lot of others, and we're not going to have any real say in the decision at the end, but we have our right to have our opinion.
And when you talked about working with other Big Ten schools, is that in getting groups to come to Evanston, or what is the nature of your work with other Big Ten schools?
No, I lead a consortium of cities of the Big Ten, which are the Convention and Visitors Bureaus that represent the 14 Big Ten teams.
Okay. And I know I'm running low on time, but you mentioned DCO, or your state money comes through DCO?
I have DCO money and Department of Health and Human Services, Cook County money, and municipal money.
Okay, now, the state money, is that tied to taxes generated in your area, or how do they decide what you get?
Yes, the cities that certify you, they have a pot of money that's allocated for the local LTCB fund, Local Tourism Convention Bureau Fund, and how many cities certify them, they divide up the money to the 36 bureaus with some formula.
Okay, so the City of Evanston's value to your organization is more than just the $74,000 or whatever?
Yes, I do get a portion, and they won't tell you how much, they only tell you your total grant, so I don't know how much I get from Evanston. But Evanston doesn't really have control of that money. They either certify their local bureau, or it stays in the pot to go to the other 35 CVBs.
Okay, thank you.
Continuing with second cracks, Councilmember Reed with a minute 45 left.
Thank you. Just a point of information that hopefully isn't against my time yet, did the videos count against, and sorry, not a personal thing, Councilmember Sufferden, but did the videos count against the councilmember's time?
I think if we're going to be really brutal in our assessment of the mayor here, which is appropriate and wise, I was a little lenient with Councilmember Sufferden because he really shouldn't have had that little question-and-answer period after the videos. Once again, never go on vacation. You got soft.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to add that, you know, actually, I too was not fully aware of, really aware at all of the situation, and that actually is pretty mild to me. I mean, I guess there's other things out there, but I see the point of that, you know, we have the Chamber of Commerce come here and advocate against bags and against all kinds of policies that we are moving forward on, and I'm offended, you know, we give money to the Chamber, and we give money to, you know, the SSA groups and whatever else, and they do their job and advocate on behalf of the businesses that they have, and I don't like their positions maybe 80% of the time that they fall down on, but, you know, I don't know if it's, you know, unless they completely step out of line appropriate to, you know, punish them for advocating for their own interest. And so I still am supportive now, I'm still completely skeptical of all of this, but for now, I'm supportive, and really do just want to double down on getting more data next year, and doubling down on what Councilmember Burns said. If you can work with the rest, with the businesses to understand where the leads are going, that's data that is really important to me moving forward, as well as more targeted data on what are the number of hits to advertisements that are coming to Evanston or Post and all of that stuff.
Yes, I will have all that, and the list of members, because remember, the restaurants and attractions, they all pay membership, and I don't think they would pay us every year if they weren't happy with what we did.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Wynn, followed by Harris. Councilmember Wynn calls the question, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Nusma seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll on the motion to call the question?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Harkatis?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and two voting against, the motion to call the question carries. So would the clerk please take the roll on the underlying motion, which is approval of this funding?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkatis?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and the funding is approved.
Thank you.
This brings us to item ED2. Would someone care to make a motion relative to item ED2?
Mr. Mayor, I will move item ED2 recommending the hiring of a full-time food service coordinator.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma, I believe, moves approval of this hire. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seen none, with a fifth...
I apologize.
Councilmember Sufferden?
I do have a question there, friendly. How long do you see this taking to become revenue-neutral to possibly profitable?
I hope next year.
Okay, you think it could be that fast?
Oh yeah, I sure hope so.
Okay.
I'm looking at, you know, we're looking at $90,000 for next year, $50,000 just for Robert Crown for next year.
Okay.
So, and we're trying to be pretty conservative for those.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, also, just, I'm fully supportive of this. We had discussion at Economic Development, but I'm curious to that question, how are you going to track the, you know, success of this individual position, and what is the revenue brought in because of this position versus what might have happened naturally?
So we have met with our finance team, and so we're adding line items for concession. Right now, you know, we really look at this as a food program, and so this is not going to be any different from our other, you know, parks and rec programs. Right now, we have recreation programs that are managed, some in-house, and also some by vendors, contractors. And so we'd like to do the same thing with our food program, except for we don't have anyone that specializes in food. And so we'd like to ensure that person specializes in food and services, and so that's why we've created a new job description, but there's still a coordinator position. And so we'll be able to make line items that are specific to concession and food, so we can make sure that we are looking at those line items specifically, so we can come back to the city council and let you know exactly how this position fared.
Great, and then last question here is, I know that you or someone in all of our staff are concerned about equity, and I'm curious, I think I've heard you speak about using this both position in the vacant spaces to achieve some of that, can you talk a bit about how, your thoughts on how we can ensure that we utilize this to engage folks, you know, to use this as a business-building opportunity, or whatever the case may be?
Yes, so of course, we'd like to engage our workforce development community, specifically because we recognize that because we have so many spaces, the food service is going to look different in each one of those spaces. What I want to eat at the Arrington Lagoon is going to look a lot different than what I want to eat at a hockey game. And so that's why we need a specific individual that will be able to outline each one of those spaces. And so we'd love to be able to have our community members work those spaces. And so when we are looking at contracts from restaurants or doing some of this in-house, we need to make sure that those restaurants will be able to hire our community members, and so that they are able to, you know, make a fair rate wage, so that they're able to work into our spaces and put the money back into Evanston.
Yeah, well, I would encourage our newspaper or newspapers that may be listening, but certainly the one that is here, and, you know, Evanston Now can come up with some salacious headline, and I encourage folks to get this out there and to let folks know that, you know, we, that this is something that your department is taking on, so, you know, folks who have business ideas, or they're doing smoothies or nachos or whatever the heck it is, or you want to do it, that, you know, they know that in the next few months they can start reaching out to the Parks and Recreation Department to, you know, to pursue some of these opportunities. And so maybe Bob or Matt Simonette or someone from Roundtable can help us get this information out there, as well as an effort internally. I think we certainly, I'm sure you will, and our communications department should take a great effort to make sure that Evanstonians and, you know, more marginalized communities and, you know, even folks who are just small business owners and not necessarily marginalized, but local, are getting these opportunities to use our facilities and make some, make some dough for both of us.
Councilmember, you and I have been contacted by a young person who wants to be an entrepreneur and have space at James Park to sell concessions, so that's one example.
And she had a wonderful business plan, and I think there, you know, Fortune 500 companies that could learn from the level of detail that she had in that business plan, so, thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember...
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkatis?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. This brings us to call of the wards, Councilmember Harris.
I will be short. September 14th at 7:00 p.m., we have a second ward meeting. That's it.
Councilmember Wynn?
No report.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Office hours in September will be Saturday the 9th at 10 o'clock, and fourth ward meeting is Saturday, September 5th, 7 o'clock, Robert Crown.
Councilmember Burns?
No report.
Councilmember Sufferden? Councilmember Revel?
Just a reminder, I have a ward meeting tomorrow evening, parasol room on the fourth floor here, 7 o'clock. We're going to have a really interesting proposal, I think, for a pocket neighborhood of 10 efficiency homes and three ADUs on Grant Street, and then we're also going to have an update from Kara Pratt about our climate action plan.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I have an eighth ward meeting this Thursday, the 31st, at 6:00 p.m. at the Levy Senior Center. We will have Laura Biggs, our chief city engineer, as well as Clayton Black in the, in our finance department. Both of them will be speaking, Laura will be speaking on our capital improvements plan, as well as our unfunded city infrastructure liabilities from roads to facilities, and Clayton will be giving us a review of our budget year-to-date, as well as discussing the new pension policy that the council, I believe unanimously, adopted. So looking forward to that discussion, and as always, we'll have our ward officers present and leave opportunity for resident discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Harkatis?
No report.
Councilmember Nusma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to 5 ILC compiled statutes 120/2, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding workers' compensation, litigation, collective bargaining, and minutes review. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act, those exceptions being 5 ILCS 120/2/Section C2, 11, 12, and 21.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves that the city council resolve itself into an executive session for the aforementioned reasons. Councilmember Wynn, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seen none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkatis?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 8:59 p.m., the council moves into an executive session to begin immediately in the councilmember library.